Okay, it looks like we're ready. Welcome and thank you for attending Santa Barbara City Council Candidates Forum. The purpose of this forum is to hear from the candidates on important issues before casting your votes. Good afternoon, my name is Ty Yeh, President of AIA Santa Barbara. Today's forum is the collaboration of AIA Santa Barbara Downtown Organization of Santa Barbara, Coastal Housing Coalition, American Planning Association of Central Coast. Our supporting partners are: Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara. Now with great honor, I would like to introduce you to today's event host and the moderator, Brian Johnson. Brian is the President of Santa Barbara Association of Realtors Managing Directors of Radius Commercial Real Estate. So Brian, please take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Santa Barbara City Council Candidate Forum hosted by AIA Santa Barbara. My name is Brian Johnson and I'm serving as the moderator this afternoon for our event. Thank you to all of the candidates who agreed to join us today. I'll start by introducing our candidates the way they are described on the ballot and in alphabetical order. Jason Carlton from District 6, electrician and business owner. Eric Friedman, District 5, council member and grocery worker. Megan Harmon, District 6, city council member. Nina Johnson, District 6, local government manager. Zachary Pike, District 6, soil technician and musician. Barrett Reed, District 4, planning commissioner and business person. And Kristin Sneddon from District 4, council member, professor and scientist. The rules are simple. We'll be asking each candidate a series of questions with the candidate having one minute to answer. Well, we were scheduled to have one more person today than we did on Monday, but I'm not sure if we'll have everybody. But we really do want to try and keep to that timeline. If you go over, we'll have a little beep to remind us all. And additionally, we ask the candidates to not disparage each other in any of their responses. We will be rotating the order in which the candidates will answer. And at the end of today's event, each candidate will have two minutes to give a brief ending statement to appeal to the voters watching. So without any further ado, we'll jump right in. I don't believe that Jason has joined us yet. So with that, I'm going to move down to Eric for the first question for today. And then I'll go through everyone else to answer that question. So the first question is, we think of this discussion like a job interview with the community. We all recognize that we have strengths and areas where we can improve. It's hard for any one person to be sufficiently knowledgeable to govern our city. Please give us an example of an area where you strive to improve.
Thank you first for being here or inviting me to be here. And if you hear any noise, it's my dog Morgan Friedman. Yes, I have a dog named Morgan Friedman. But in terms of improving, for me, I think it is more being a little more tech savvy in terms of having a presence on some of the outreach capabilities, me personally, on some of the social media and other platforms. That's where I'm striving to improve. I've always been more in my background working at the county under Salud and Naomi Schwartz for many years and then more in-person meetings. And that's more where I like to handle that and Zoom has allowed that to go online. But really having that extra outreach for me is in upgrading my tech capabilities to complement my interpersonal meeting skills is where I'm at. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Megan?
Thank you. Thanks so much, Brian. Thank you to AIA and all the partners for hosting this debate. This is really important, I think, that we all take time to really consider areas that we can improve and where we can do better moving forward. And one of the things that I intend to focus on in my next term is really to increase my direct involvement with our nonprofit sector. There are so many opportunities for us to fuse the work we're doing at City Hall with the incredible providers in our nonprofit sector, particularly those nonprofits that serve our low-income population. So for me, that's a focus that I would really like to work on in the next term and really to build those partnerships in service of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina, how about you?
For me, I think it's continuing to learn about best practices and different disciplines in our area. I think that the pandemic has given us an opportunity to be innovative. I'm on the FT Enterprise Forum Board and now considered Emerging Venture Forum. And this is giving me, you know, a chance to understand different technologies, science, different disciplines and in our business world here in Santa Barbara. And I feel like studying and getting to understand all of the different industries that we have here in Santa Barbara is so important moving forward because they contribute to how we're going to be innovative as we create our future, as we innovate our way out of the pandemic. So for me, it's continuing to learn out different disciplines moving forward.
Thank you. Barrett?
Brian, I think I'm gonna go with Eric's answer. I am not tech savvy at all. And we're learning, I'm learning, with everything being remote, that that's critical. Social, I mean, to be honest, social media is not something I have ever done before this campaign. And so I'm starting to understand how effective it is as a tool and a resource. So I'm on a path to self-improvement with technology and social media. I'm coming into the 21st century finally.
Better late than never. And Kristin?
Thank you. You know, I would say communication. I'm a workhorse. I tend to receive an email and get right to work on the issue and forward it and talking to the people who can fix the problem. And I really need to improve on pausing in the steps along the way to re-communicate back to whoever brought me the issue in the first place. And it does happen to me a lot actually where then I get back to someone once something's been resolved and I have gotten the feedback that I could be communicating more in the in-between time. And that's the same with my council colleagues. That's the same out facing to the public. I think I appreciate good communication and it's something that in my regular work life, I'm so used to being in charge of my own domain that I need to work on that more and communicating out.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next question. Megan, we'll start with you on this one. We continually hear about the housing crisis in our state and across the country, especially in realizing middle and low-income housing. What do you think are the top three issues that are preventing Santa Barbara from realizing that type of housing? And what specific idea or plan would you put forward to the council and community to solve this problem?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the top three reasons that we have difficulty realizing this middle-income housing first is financing. We've all heard this before, but it's definitely true. There are subsidies available from the state and federal government for low-income or special needs housing. Those same subsidies are not available for that middle bracket housing. So it really is a struggle to make those developments pencil out. We also suffer from a lack of availability of space. There's just not so many places in this city to build that housing. Finally, permitting and streamlining is certainly an issue. You know, when we put these projects together, the added burden of a complicated and unclear process can really put the brakes on this. In terms of how I would resolve these issues, I'm really focused at the moment on the financing piece. I have proposed and intend to focus on and hopefully with the help of my colleagues pass through in the next term, an equity investment fund whereby the city can take a dedicated amount of money and provide the sort of missing funding to make this middle-income housing pencil out. And in that way, the city is actually an equity partner, a true and full partner in middle-income housing developments. Not only is it a really good use of our taxpayer money, we are literally investing in our community, but it also gives the city some skin in the game to really facilitate these projects through to completion because we have an expectation of a return. So, you know, I'm very proud of the work that we've done as a council to begin the process of having that conversation about an equity investment fund and I'm committed to seeing it through in the next term.
Thank you. Okay. Nina, same question to you.
Thank you. I want to see us actually take advantage of this tremendous opportunity that we have right now where we have too much retail space, not enough housing for our diverse community. I think we already have a lot of sites. We don't need to create another fund. We can apply those opportunities of bulk energy on our city-owned sites now and enlist help from the private sector to get some proposal on what it takes to create affordable rentals and home ownership opportunities. We have a number of sites that are there for us and we could be on them right now. The parking lot next to the NTD bus station would give us a perfect opportunity for affordable housing. Project so well, right next to the bus station. All of the property or building, we have Macy's that has been sitting vacant for several years. We have Nordstrom's that's been vacant for over a year. We have sites. We just need to start taking action on those, like focus our energy. Also, improving the awareness of the community of the high cost to build housing. And that is really important so that everyone understands all of the various costs and how difficult it is to actually get a housing project to fruition. And then finally, as was touched upon earlier, reassuring predictability in our planning and permitting process is what's going to reduce and lower costs so that someone who owns property chooses to build housing over other uses or leaving for new vacant.
Thank you. Okay. Barrett, how about you?
Yeah, so I would say first and foremost, Brian, it's our city council leadership. There is this brutal combination of inaction where we so badly need our leadership to act and inconsistency where we so desperately need the consistency, the predictability, the certainty. So there are specific examples of this that I can get into in our next questions. But related to this, just generally poor priorities from council. I have a clear plan moving forward and that has to include, I think, at the top of the list, adaptive reuse. There has been so much talk and so little action in four years. So from my perspective, instead of incentivizing new development at five stories and 60 feet, let's make it possible to convert our largest vacant spaces to housing and mixed use and our smallest spaces. Can't do that either. There's a huge opportunity at Lacumbra Plaza and we need to initiate a specific plan and follow through on that. There's funding available from SB CAG to do it. It's just waiting there, ready for us to act. We're missing the opportunity. I would also suggest tracking ADU income levels, private-public partnerships. I think we'll get to that. And then lastly, we just have to finally fix our broken and impossible-to-navigate permitting and review process. We have to fix it.
Okay, thank you. And Kristin, your thoughts?
Thank you. It's hard not to respond directly to that. I will say that I'm happy that it's in agreement with some of the things that we already have in play and underway and I'm in complete agreement with. Our main issues are the high price of land and scarcity. And every time we make an incentive, we're driving up the price of land and pricing people out again. Some of the solutions that I completely agree with and have been working on, starting after the NOVAC report, with an oversight committee to streamline the process, we need transparency and consistency and predictability in our permitting processes. It's completely unacceptable that it should take so many years and we are making great progress and have a new community development director who's very focused on this as well. Adaptive reuse is something, yes, in agreement. All of council and planning commission in a joint meeting in the last two years has prioritized this and we all agree that that is the way of the future. And again, filling those vacant spaces, Macy's, Sears, Nordstrom, and having the downtown master plan and have staff to bring back an assessment of public lands that are available for us to work in partnership with the housing authority, who are really the only ones who can bring us affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and Eric?
So I concur with a lot that's been said and to borrow a line from your world, Brian, it's location, location, location. We're an internationally known city where people from all over the world want to live here and we don't have any land left to build or very little of it. So the demand is always going to outpace the supply that we have. But within that, we do have some significant opportunities to provide the workforce housing that we need. I'll start with a couple of things. One is we do have the Long Range Development Oversight Committee that was just mentioned. I'm the chair of that and council member Jordan and council member Alejandra Gutierrez sit on that. And we have been working with our staff to follow up on 31 recommendations from the NOVAC report. There are some we've already implemented process-wise and looking at it, but there are some that are more complex. They might require charter amendments or at least ordinance amendments. So we're taking a low-hanging fruit and medium and we're working on these larger ones. And then also just the culture. We have a new community development director to change the culture there so that it's more of how can we facilitate these projects while maintaining our character. And another thing to add is that we have a great opportunity here with, it's probably the number one priority, I think the next council is going to face, is the selection of our next city administrator because that's the person who implements the policy of the council. And then to wrap it up, two other items is developing specific or development agreements. Myself and council member Alejandra Gutierrez put forward, she proposed it and I co-sponsored with her for a project on North Milpus that created more affordability. And then we did, as a council, approve that Lacumbra Plaza needs to go through a specific plan. And right now, the ball is in all the owners' courts to come together, but once they do, I'm up to speed on that. And once they do, we are going to have a specific plan that will really address the needs and create a lot of affordable housing department.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I know that that was a, you know, sort of a long question that we were asking and I appreciate everyone trying to get their answers in a timely manner. Nina, we'll start with you for this third one. There are many examples of average unit density housing projects that have had to go through an inefficient and costly process. One project went through 14 separate hearings and had to sacrifice almost 20% of their units before achieving approval. What specifically would you do to change and correct this problem?
I would look very carefully at our objective design criteria for housing projects. And I understand that this is a project that has been worked on and we need to make sure that's dirty because it can save us time and really coming up with the objective standard that our housing projects are evaluated by. Also identify best practices on the ground and in concept through the design charrettes that have been completed. Really learn from them. Our design community, our housing thought leaders, our design review board members, figuring out what works on small lots, what works on lots, different configurations that work the best to get the largest number of units. During the charrette, there were practical lessons learned in which configurations work the best for the most livable floor area. Taking a close look at works that the project's in and the brainstorming that we do to come up with a project, we're incorporating the best practices that we've learned, the lessons that we've learned through all of our exercises.
Thank you. All right, Barrett, your comments?
Sorry, Brian, is this the AUD question?
Correct, yes.
So yeah, first and foremost, we have to implement the recommendations of our consulting studies, endless consulting studies and endless review for our permitting and review process. We just have to do it. Leaders need political will to do it. We just can't afford to have such fearful and indecisive leadership. We cannot have any more review, no more studies, no more bureaucracy, no more subcommittees. It's just time to act on it. And then linking back to my answers to the first question, an example of inconsistent leadership that puts frankly our single-family neighborhoods at risk for development. There was a recent appeal to council on a 21-unit downtown apartment project on De La Vina that complied with all the AUD incentives to bring rental housing downtown. And two council members, including the District 4 incumbent, voted to approve. While they voted to approve the downtown incentives, that's great. They then voted against the project that was approved based on those downtown AUD incentives. So voting against thoughtful rental projects downtown only puts more pressure for development elsewhere and on our single-family neighborhoods. So I will firmly protect our single-family neighborhoods while incentivizing rental housing where we need it, which is downtown.
I'm sorry, I gotta cut you off there. Thank you. Kristin, ideas on the AUD, you know, issues that you see out there?
Yes, and if I could just have a quick second to answer to that, I didn't approve of the AUD incentives. And so voting against that project was completely consistent. I believe that the AUD incentives drive up the price and we're not getting enough inclusion housing for what we're getting there. Having said that, it's completely unacceptable that projects should be delayed because of our permitting process or our review process. We need to be clear, consistent, transparent. This is something I've worked very hard on. We've come a long way. We are not there yet. But I think you're going to start seeing some big improvements and the studies we've done confirmed what we already knew but gave us actionable 25 to 31 actionable items that we are now holding ourselves and our staff accountable for. And I applaud that this election brings up this issue and that we continue to talk about it because we need to keep the pressure on to keep improving that. It's completely unacceptable not to be transparent and predictable.
Thank you. Eric, your thoughts?
Thank you. So first, the state has made some significant changes to state law that we need to implement. First of all, being that depending on the incentives you use, you can only have five design board hearings, so up to five. And it's also, there's been a change to go from subjective standards to objective standards that we need to consider and we are moving in that direction. So that in and of itself should reduce some of the timeframe. Like I mentioned in my last answer, the Long Range Development Oversight Committee is working on these procedural changes. One of the things that we just talked about last week is ensuring that we have the proper staffing and tech support for our new Acela program because it is very complex and we need to ensure that it goes forward and that the community understands how to use it. That's the, we have this great new tool, but we're not maximizing it right now. And then getting back to it, I do think that development agreements, but in particular developing criteria, so we don't have one-off development agreements, but something that we can use citywide for a process will help us have more certainty in the process. And this is for Lacumbra Plaza and San Nuevo in particular.
Thank you. Thank you. And Megan, you will bring it home for us.
Well, I would just start out by pointing out that it's not just AUD projects that suffer from a really onerous and difficult unpredictable process, permitting and design process. I mean, we've all heard the stories about ADUs, about various different types of development. So this is a problem across the board that certainly impacts the AUD program, particularly as we are trying to facilitate rental housing. You know, I have spoken to so many developers who say the issue is not the existence of a design review process. The issue is the unknowability and unpredictability of that process. So if you can really put some contours, some concrete contours on what that process would look like, we can plan for it when we put together our pro forma. So what I would like to see us do, particularly in conjunction with the State Street master planning, is to put together a pilot project that says if you are doing what we are asking of you, if you are doing adaptive reuse, we are going to say here are X number of design reviews that will be completed in Y number of months. Not yes, for sure you'll get through at the end of it, but look, let's both recognize the city and design reviews and the developer that we've only got X number of bites at the apple. So we are going to put our heads together to get the best project from the very beginning. That's going to be proof of concept when we see folks actually bringing projects to the table and the city following through with the timelines that we have agreed through in this pilot. And then I think we can expand it out citywide. That's really what people need. They need surety.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Barrett, this next question, we'll start with you. What would you do to support the city's participation in private-public partnerships to make use of ground-level parking lots, garages and other city-owned properties such as Paseo Nuevo to increase housing downtown and throughout the community?
Yeah, important question. I'd give our economic development manager the resources he needs to be successful in pursuing these opportunities. Right now, he doesn't have it. The opportunities are written into the new economic development plan, something I pushed for on planning commission. But I also made it known during that review that there's absolutely no possible way to implement the plan without resources and the personnel to do it. So for these partnerships, we need requests for proposals to go out in order to begin that process and they haven't. I was a part of a small group who conducted the interviews for the development manager. And we were told by the city administrator at the time, as directed by council, that this position wouldn't be given resources or personnel beyond the position itself. So we've hired someone for a position that they can't possibly succeed in without the resources to be successful. I would absolutely change that.
Okay, thank you. Kristin?
Yes, thank you. So specifically for the lots, this is one of the main reasons and impetus that started me thinking about asking for a downtown master plan. We had our parking lots in play. Some were being considered for police station, some were being considered for housing, different locations and uses. And I questioned if these are all in play, what is our plan for how they're to be used and how do those integrate in with Paseo Nuevo? And at that time, Macy's was vacant and Nordstrom wasn't yet. And we'll work on De La Gare Plaza and Library Plaza. So the very first thing that needs to happen is an assessment of what those public lots are, how much they're used, then possibly decoupling parking requirements to housing downtown so that that can flow into the underutilized lot. And then adding to that, how much housing or density could be put on those lots? I mean, if they're in play and we're bargaining with them, then we need to maximize the affordability and usability that we're getting out of them. And that is what we need for our master plan in addition to our historic resources and the buffer zone, all of that in consideration.
Thank you.
And then if we pre-identify, then that will streamline the public-private partnership.
Thank you. Eric?
So I support wholeheartedly that we are repurposing our downtown parking as long as we don't lose that parking. That's a key component of it where you maintain the base level of parking because we do want to support our businesses downtown. We want people to come down there. And I think as we build up, we have to look at the, especially in the downtown of Pebbleville or how these new buildings would fit in with that. It could make it more attractive than an open piece of asphalt, actually. So it could actually add to the charm of our community by having the housing. And I would say that as long as we're using the city investment of that property, I would prioritize that we do the missing middle because that is where you don't have the incentives and the incentives in terms of the private market to build these. And you have the other incentives through the housing authority and others that you could use. So that's one of the areas I would really like to see is the missing middle becoming part of those lots.
Thank you. All right, Megan?
Thank you. I'll echo my colleagues, council members Friedman and Sneddon, on the importance of really identifying the city-owned lots that can be put to good use for missing-middle housing. You know, I was very early on in my tenure on council, working hard behind the scenes to facilitate the use of the Correo Castillo commuter lot for missing-middle housing development. And I'm extremely proud that as a council, we spoke unanimously and very strongly about the importance of putting that housing there to serve our first responders, to serve our teachers, to serve our downtown workforce. So that is moving forward and it's an example of a lot of creative work on all sides, particularly by our housing authority and their financing and how they were able to put that together. I won't belabor the point of an equity investment fund, but public-private partnership is so crucial to getting missing-middle housing. And for the city to be able to make up the funding gap and get that housing built is really sort of the most fundamental public-private partnership that we can have. And it really is important for us to move forward on equal footing. um, whether with private developers or with our housing authority. And I would also add very briefly, when it comes to spaces like Paseo Nuevo, like Nordstrom, like Macy's, you know, look, the city, um, can't force what we want to go into those spaces. But what we can do is play an important role behind the scenes to look at the legal documents that are in place, for example, and say, what can we do to remove the barriers to housing? What can we do to make it more attractive to put in those spaces what we want to see? Um, I, again, at Nordstrom, you know, there's an agreement in place that specifically says only office or retail are allowed in those parcels. Now, it's important that the city play a role to renegotiate those types of agreements, um, at the very least, because otherwise, uh, housing's not even on the table.
Thank you. Thank you. Nina?
Thanks. So I addressed this early on. If we look at our surface parking lots, look at our parking structures, we should open those up and invite proposals from the private sector. Those are opportunities that are waiting for us and we can start considering what options are available to us. When it comes to, uh, Nuevo and Macy's, you know, I really think that, uh, even our existing agreements, we can, at any given Tuesday, council can take an action. And there's fine print there that shows that the requirements can change. I think it's on councils' lap and it's something that council can take an action on, uh, to negotiate and behind the scenes, uh, work diligently to get the use that we want to see there to make sure that those building lots are vacant.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Kristin. Santa Barbara has had a 60-foot height limit for commercially zoned properties since 1930, and yet few buildings have been allowed to be built to that height. What's your position on allowing proposed housing in four to five stories, up to 60 feet in height by right, without special findings?
Well, I'll start by saying no. Um, I, just to clear up front, um, by right, no. I'd like to remind maybe the A I A of their own survey where, um, almost 54% or the majority thought three stories was, um, tall enough for, for our downtown. And, and that was, you know, thousands of people answered that survey. I think we could replace like for like. So if something is already built, uh, a 60-foot height and you wanted to replace it with housing and it's already a certain volume, I would be okay with by right, having that be replaced at, at that volume. And, you know, we have market rate buildings that are already allowed. And, um, I don't believe that market rate apartments, uh, fit the definition of community benefit. And for, um, a truly, you know, a hundred percent affordable, income restricted, um, project, then I think that could qualify as, as community benefit. But by right, just because it's a rental property, um, I, I don't, I don't see that as, as worth the trade-off for losing our, our mountain views, our sky views, our air circulation. I, I want to know we're getting a hundred percent affordability or more out of that deal.
Thank you. Okay, Eric, same question to you.
Great. So I, I agree a hundred percent with Kristin. I don't support it going by right. And I'd like to back up and say, one of the most important aspects of serving on council is we are part of a legacy that goes even before 1930 of really shaping this town. It's actually an international model for architecture of how a city should be designed. And, and you go to any architectural school, you go around the world, Santa Barbara is up there on cities of being well-designed and well-thought-out, well-planned in their architecture. And each council has responsibility to maintain that. And all it takes is, um, just some ill-informed or uninformed decisions. So I don't believe it should be by right. Now, with that being said, if there is a proposal, you take it case-by-case basis on exactly like, uh, Kristin said, is on a community benefit, uh, process. So if there is a benefit where you're getting a high number of affordable units or some other type of benefit, you go through the planning process, just like any project would, and that would be determined and there would be community input on it. But again, one of the most important aspects of serving on council is we have that legacy of all those who came before us and we need to set the stage that we protect and preserve that for future generations in Santa Barbara. And each year it gets tougher and tougher because the challenges we face are becoming, uh, more unaffordability. So it becomes tougher with each council, the pressures are, are much greater.
All right. Thank you. Megan?
Thanks. I agree with my colleagues. Um, I don't believe 60-foot by right is appropriate for our city. That said, as they, I think have both articulated, you know, there may be opportunities and cases where the project is right to consider higher, the, the placement is right. I mean, I, I, I think what's really important, what I've always tried to communicate is that, um, I really want proposals to come in. What I don't want is for us to, um, stymie that creativity. And I think we do need to be open to considering new ideas and, but certainly not by right, absolutely not. There are plenty of examples of taller buildings that work beautifully in our community. I think if we can maintain that, um, then there's certainly, there's certainly potential.
Okay. Thank you. And Nina, your thoughts?
Yes, along with, also I'm not in support of 60-foot, uh, development by right. I think that if we find location, the right fit, uh, making sure that there's also a community benefit and allowing it with special findings, I, then it's a great, but I see a row of 60-foot tall buildings. Um, and I, if we start with our tallest buildings, those opportunities now and look at how we could redevelop those sites, we need to figure out how we can adapt those buildings. They're already tall and we can start there. I think we should start with a few of those and work from there.
Okay. Thank you. And we've just been joined by Zachary Pike, another candidate, uh, for District Six. Zachary, uh, I don't know if you heard the question, but the question was, Santa Barbara has a 60-foot height limit for commercially zoned properties since 1930, yet few buildings have been allowed to be built to that height. What would be your position on allowing proposed housing developments in four to five-story range, uh, up to 60 feet, by right, without special findings?
Hi, hi all. Good to see everybody here. I want to apologize for showing up late. Uh, we're emergency works. I, I did mend and disrespect by, and thank you for letting me join the forum. On the question of the height, I am completely against any more buildings being built higher than three or four stories. Three stories, I would say. Um, there, like I said in another debate, there are three things that make Santa Barbara attractive to visitors that make us a world-class city, and those are the beach, the, the culture in the community and the beautiful skylines we have. The way the sunlight is cast upon the mountains in what you would call a painterly light really is, I mean, to lose that would be to lose a lot of the charm and the personality of the city. That being said, I'm against it a hundred percent.
Okay. Thank you. And Barrett, um, we'll go with you.
Well, I'm going to join the group and also say I don't support it. Uh, in fact, you know, Brian, I, I wonder why council will not update the height findings, the exemptions on height that we're bound to on the Planning Commission. It's, it's really driving us crazy. Our height findings are similar to the state, the new state law SB nine. There's no finding for affordability when approving a project in the city for a height increase. And this is on council. If we could change it on Planning Commission, we would have done that already. Uh, and there's just generally this push, uh, to incentivize new housing development at 60 feet, five stories, something that I strongly oppose on Planning Commission, all while these large vacant spaces are left vacant. So, you know, I'm frequently asked why those spaces remain vacant, why they aren't being repurposed for housing or mixed use. And like I've said, they remain vacant because it requires an ordinance, an adaptive reuse ordinance to convert to rental housing without having to go through the endless modifications and exemptions. And, and it's not just the large spaces, it's even the smallest spaces that we want to, that may want to convert a small office to a residential unit. They don't have that ability to do it. They've got to come to Planning Commission. So it's just unacceptable. Under my leadership, it'll change.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, Eric, back up to you at the top of the rotation. How do you envision increasing Santa Barbara's economic vitality via your role on the council? And what specific actions would you take to support these efforts?
So originally I had proposed that we create the position of an economic development manager and I, I brought it to council. But it wasn't ripe yet and it was actually not there. But then it came back through a community process later and we were able to fund it. So I think that says it all right there is the council needs to work with the business community. We need to build those relationships up. They are a little strained right now. Specifically, we need to work with the chamber and the downtown organization and visit Santa Barbara, which, and we've supported all them financially and really invest in that. The other thing too, as a council member, is we do have the ability to look at how we can program and activate our open public spaces. And I, I brought forward the proposal to partner with the Santa Barbara Library Foundation to build Library Plaza and secure the funding for that. And now we have this new open space that's going to go to construction, uh, next year that we can really program and activate those spaces and it can become part of the revitalization of the historic cultural arts district. So really looking at our assets and what we can do at the council, promote them and working with our business community are the ways to go.
Thank you. Megan?
Thanks. The, the role of, um, a council member in facilitating the economic vitality of our city is, is really multifaceted, I think. Um, the first prong is in many ways to, to get out of the way of local business. And by that, I mean, um, to really pull back on onerous and burdensome rules and permitting processes that stymie the creativity and, um, and really hurt the ultimate success of our local businesses and our local entrepreneurs. I think that's an important piece. We have to get out of their way. The second piece, um, is sort of maybe, um, sounds not consonant with that, but I think it, it, it's closely intertwined. And that's to engage closely with our business community simultaneously in ways that support them. We are doing that through our State Street master planning process. Um, I'm really excited about the committee that our council put together. We have brought together some of the best and brightest minds in the city of Santa Barbara, including the chamber, including downtown Santa Barbara, to really take everyone's expertise and everyone's input to craft a plan, um, that works for the entire city and, and that actually, um, supports and lifts up our local business. And finally, I would add that as a council member, I really believe we have a responsibility to focus on diversifying our city's economy in all ways that we can. Investing in our commercial fishing industry, investing in the tech industry, uh, building relationships with our local universities to build that town-gown connection. Um, those are all part of what the council member's role is and certainly, um, a, a key part of how I see my own.
Thank you. And Nina, how would you answer?
Yes, I think the city plays such a large role in convening multiple players of our ecosystem. There are many, uh, different shoulders that really contribute to our economic vitality. The city is just one player. So if we look at our banks, our owners, our business owners, uh, we have many government agencies that also help. All of these different organizations contribute to our economic vitality and it's really identifying different steps that we can all be taking together. I really want to emphasize shopping local and buying from local stores, eating local food, you know, buying for seafood from our own waters, helping all, our entire ecosystem, our entire community, understand those opportunities and supporting those local entrepreneurs and that system of how we can support local entrepreneurs. Uh, we need to make that our focus and help those businesses get off the ground. Figure out how we help them move into space, whether they're operating, uh, with a storefront location or from their home. Help people launch their businesses successfully. So I think that's such an important point and building those private, public-private partnerships with all of our different community organizations to get things moving faster.
Okay. Thank you. Zachary, your thoughts on the question?
Um, I agree with Megan that, that, uh, making it easier on local businesses by, by streamlining the permitting process and making less, less demands on business owners, uh, would be a, a positive thing. I also would like to see the city as a job creator. I think that there's room, uh, there's room in the budget to make more careers for more locals, people that live within the city. Uh, maybe expanding the transit system if we put in a trolley system or a municipal rail. I'd like more of the, the, uh, more cleaning downtown, cleaning the beaches, cleaning the sidewalks and create maybe a, a whole department where we, instead of outsourcing it, we can create jobs within the city for people who live here. Keep the money in the community.
Okay. Thank you. Barrett?
Yeah. So, uh, really my focus would be first and foremost on the downtown. It's, it's the key revenue driver for our city and provides for what we all love citywide. And from my experience, I, I understand what it takes to improve our downtown. I do it every day. Uh, and it's, it's also why I'm on the board of downtown Santa Barbara. So in terms of downtown Santa Barbara's role, um, in economic vitality, I, I think we need to re-establish a clean and safe downtown. And to do that, um, we are pursuing an enhanced business improvement district, a property business improvement district. And this will help ensure State Street and the surrounding area is clean and well-lit and safe and secure. It'll give stakeholders more control over the basic daily maintenance and management of our downtown. Homelessness has to get addressed with sustainable solutions. We have to fix our permitting process. We have to bring housing downtown. We have to incentivize adaptive reuse. Um, the list goes on. There's so much, uh, to address now.
Thank you. Kristin?
Thank you. I, I would say that, that this is one of our most important roles as council members is, is addressing the economic vitality. Um, I, it, the economic vitality of our businesses affects the vitality of our whole city and the programs that we're able to support. So it's important to realize that relationship and our economic vitality is more than just downtown. A District Four representative should equally value Coast Village Road and, and the example that that is and the tax base that that brings in. There are not vacancies on Coast Village Road, although recently in the last week, but through Thomas Fire, debris flow, pandemic, they've kept their businesses open. It's a good example of being clean, well-kept. Um, businesses have their own security to handle issues of, um, behaviors that, that push patrons away and, and they take the responsibility of that. Having said that, we do need to have a very clean and accessible downtown for everyone and welcoming. I support the Economic Development Director position, um, and he does need some support. And the, the document that he came up with, um, is a living document that needs constant review and renewal and, uh, relying on our blue economy, our green economy, the art and integrating all of that in together with our historic resources, which is why I propose the downtown master plan, to have that all be integrated in together.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um, moving on. Megan, what is your vision for State Street and the downtown central business district in the immediate term and the longer term?
Well, I'd start by saying, um, it's, it's not really my vision that's most important so much as we develop a community vision. That's really what's needed to ensure the long-term viability of the State Street promenade. Um, the master planning effort, as I already talked about, is about putting together that community vision. So what we have is attractive to locals. If locals love it, tourists will love it too. Um, but in the long term, what do I really want to see? Mixed use in our downtown. Um, that is what we need. That is how we can ensure life and vitality in our central business district to have people living downtown, they can shop downtown, they can eat downtown, they can work downtown. That's also key to our long-term environmental sustainability. In the immediate, look, the street needs to be clean and it needs to be organized. And those are two things that we need to really focus on today. Um, and, and actually can, we can make a huge difference by adding some cleanings in, really sort of clarifying where the different types of, um, of transport will go. You know, those are changes we can make right now that will improve the day-to-day experience of being on the street.
Thank you. Nina, your thoughts?
Yes. In the immediate term, we need to focus on the sense cleanliness. Uh, we're a resident and living in downtown or you're visiting from somewhere else. The cleanliness of our city is the first and the last impression that you're going to have of downtown. We need to see that focus there. Doesn't seem to be there right now. In the long term, we need to make the transition from an outdoor dining and shopping area to a village residence, create a steady pulse of activity downtown, no longer just sitting on trying to bring people, uh, to the downtown area. We also need to shift away from a linear, exploring different districts of the downtown area. Uh, I'm seeing more landscaping and beautification of our public places. Uh, I'm seeing more landscaping and beautification of our public places and our passeos that can fill all of our spaces. Really helping people explore and find inspiration as they walk around lush greenery, like art, decorative details. Uh, these are all the types of things that we need to make sure are integrated well and are uniquely Santa Barbara, befitting of our of architecture and design. We want to see a variety of architects designing buildings.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Zachary, your thoughts on State Street?
Um, State Street, I think if any, if any uh, energy or uh, any money needs to be put into State Street, I don't think a facelift is going to fix it. I think money has to be put into the community, money has to be put into events, it has to be put into the 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 things that people are going to do downtown. Um, one thing I wanted to say was there's been a lot of surveys over the last couple of years that have been given out to the public by the city. And and these surveys, they don't really give you any option for any feedback. They just give you uh, boxes to check about what color do you like? You know, do you like this? Do you like that? It's more, it gets the feeling of more that they're pushing an agenda on you rather than asking you what you think. Um, I wrote down a couple of things. I wanted a list of things that that locals have lost over the last few years. Um, every study, every survey you get prioritizes, it says, a place for the locals, you know? We want to emphasize the locals, a place for the locals to hang out, a place for Santa Barbara residents to enjoy. Um, well, here's some things we've lost over the over the last couple of years. Um, parade routes, parade routes with the Fiesta Parade, parade routes with the Solstice Parade. We don't know what the future of those is going to be. Those those parades have been around for a long time and they're a part of the the Santa Barbara lifestyle. The farmer's market seems to be on 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 the chopping block. No one knows where it's going to end up. That's that's a big centralized social scene in Santa Barbara. Um, the soccer fields, the soccer fields at Dwight Murphy, I think there's a a plan to put a park there with some uh, some new artistic playground equipment. Now those soccer fields are packed every weekend with game after game and they're they're beloved by the Santa Barbans here.
So Zachary, I apologize. I I've got to cut you off. I know you've got a, you've got a list of items there. Um, and hopefully we can get, we can get around to those a little bit later, but I I do need to just keep moving.
Of course, yeah. My point being is that to emphasize the people downtown and not so much what the buildings are going to look like.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Barrett?
Yeah, so I I touched on the uh, enhanced improvement district. I think that's critical. Um, and that's something I'm prioritizing in partnership with downtown Santa Barbara and the Chamber of Commerce, which is great. Um, homelessness just has to be addressed with sustainable solutions. We I, we have to get back to our basic enforcement of our ordinances downtown while truly providing temporary housing with services um, for those who need and want the help. And I would locate those outside of high-impact areas of our city. Um, and direct the effort to partner with Dignity Moves for Housing and Services. They're incredible. The county has a deal with them. We don't. Um, there is an abundance of funding and our city has sat idle without a solution to act on. As far as fixing the permitting and review process, it's critical. I mean, we we survey and we represent the businesses downtown on downtown Santa Barbara. Businesses fail and run out of money before they can even open. So that has to get fixed to address the vacancy issue.
Thank you. And Kristin?
Thank you. Um, so in the short term, and and it to separate it out immediately, we do need to clean it up. I mean, the the streets are dirty. They're being used as a restaurant floor, so that does need to be addressed. And we need to handle the bicycles. I hear a lot about um, the e-bikes and things going too fast. And now that all ages are coming down and enjoying the passeos. So in the short term, we really need to address some of those basic safety issues. In the long term, and this is again why I called for a downtown master plan, we need to do very careful design, but also programming of the space and not just sort of whack-a-mole of De La Guerra Plaza, Library Plaza, Northern Space and and what happens all between there. And another impetus for calling for that plan was seeing the previous AIA Design Sherette uh, output and saw all those beautiful ideas and visions. And I kept asking Cass Enberg, actually who I talked to, I kept saying, what happens to these plans? They just, they, where did they go to die? And the idea is, why don't we move forward on one of these visions? It's been, it's been done so many times now and some of them are way too bold for Santa Barbara and some of them are just right and some of them aren't enough. And we need to hone in on that and really plan our spaces for the arts, for our cultural heritage and not just red tile roofs, but our Tumash history, Chicano history, Asian American, Black history. It's really time to bring that all in and celebrate what it is that makes us uh, who we are and 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 what we are. Gardens, passeos, options for all ages and shaded spaces and really make it beautiful and welcoming.
Good, thank you. And Eric, I didn't forget about you.
All right, so um, on the structural side, the adaptive reuse and getting to the point where we can implement that, because we need to be able to support local businesses run by local entrepreneurs downtown. And right now the spaces are just not um, affordable for many of them or nor nor do they meet the needs when you're talking about very long buildings and the amount of square footage that they need at the rents that they have. But if with adaptive reuse, you can create smaller spaces for niche businesses that will bring people downtown. And that gets back to the council's role in really revamping our permitting process and and community development process. Big picture, I think we need to make a major investment in the arts. About five years ago, a study came out through the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission that there's about $200 million in economic activity provided by the arts and that's the nonprofit arts. It doesn't take into consideration the for-profit. We as a community probably invested, I would put it somewhere in the 75 million or more. Uh, when we did the Granada, we did the New Vic, the Courthouse Legacy, Library Plaza. So we have this capacity. And for a town our size, we are probably second to none in the country for our ability to program the arts. So I really want to work with our arts commission, saying how can we upgrade that to be more than an advisory body if needed or have them more involved? And double down on the partnership that we have with the County Arts Commission, because we have a lot of resources that can come in such as master planning. But the arts are going to be the key to filling those voids uh, long term.
Thank you. Okay, Nina. The state legislature has approved many new laws, including SB nine and SB ten, to increase density and expedite housing projects to address the housing crisis. Are you willing to embrace these new laws or are you willing to use re-city resources to oppose them? And if so, why?
Yes, I said, we need to help property owners if they want to convert uh, a garage, if they want to add a unit behind their home to help them create an affordable, below-market unit. Um, and I think that that also provide income to the homeowner so that they can continue to afford their home. Some single-family areas can handle that additional density and others cannot. So, and I think many are already built and I don't see additional units coming into those areas, especially as I'm walking around. Fortunately, the state legislation exempts any area where you've got a historic district, high-fire hazard area, any flood zone. So I think that uh, once we firm and clarify where that uh, the restrictions are and where you can build and where you cannot, I think that's going to be very helpful. And locally here, we can help people firm up and create historic districts. Um, and we take that action here locally if there's support neighborhood uh, to make sure that they take the care of their neighborhood.
Thank you. Barrett, your thoughts? Oh, excuse me, I apologize. Zachary, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in order there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, in regard to the SB nine, the SB ten, I'm not really a fan of either one of those as they seem like they kind of force development on on the on the uh, the city. But I would rather see ADUs put in than high-rise buildings and higher-density housing. Um, it it's almost as if we're choosing between lesser two evils, but from what I understand is that if we don't work with the state medics, then we will have them kind of forced on us. So we have to be able to, I guess, kind of guide how we're going to be able to use it in city. Um, we are lucky that the historic district can pro likely remain untouched. But in the other districts, it seems like the uh, the uh, the rezoning can be a positive thing. If we can keep the investor culture away from in uh, raising the rents and and if we can keep them affordable, perhaps we can use it to our advantage.
Thank you. Okay, Barrett, didn't mean to, didn't mean to, you know, interrupt you there.
No problem. So yeah, no, I I I think, Brian, that the 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 law threatens the preservation of the very nature and beauty of our city. I mean, bottom line, um, and it'll make housing less affordable uh, while destroying the charm and character of our neighborhoods. And that's particularly important with the the neighborhoods in District Four. Um, and and in allowing the the parcels to be divided, it it pits developers against families, prices will skyrocket. And there, and it doesn't require affordability. So I'm definitely dedicated to do everything to block it and fight it. Um, the issue can't wait or we'll lose leverage. So that's why I'm planning commission, we're prioritizing it. And we're bringing it to Planning Commission next week, where all certainly fight back aggressively. Um, this is work I know how to do and prepared to do it. Um, and uh, we'll see what happens.
All right, thank you. Okay, Kristin?
Thank you. Yeah, this is something I've been very outspoken about. We need to fight back hard. I've held town halls on this, joined with other cities, other council members, LA Times, anything I could sign on to to help fight this. Lobbied our local legislators who ended up not voting for it. Um, but these laws, you know, they won't solve our housing problems. It'll make more housing, but not affordable housing. And what I'm particularly concerned about right now is that they're very serious threat to public safety at this point and don't address affordability. We are hearing from our uh, in in internal discussions, and you'll see this at Planning Commission, that the recommendation internally is that these doesn't qualify for a high-fire exemption, which I think is outrageous. And I will fight with everything that I have. My my husband's family home burnt down in 1977 with them narrowly escaping with their, you know, nine children. Uh, there is not room to evacuate there safely or to build more density or to quadruple the density in these areas. So I'm actually very fired up and furious about this right now, that we are to have a high-fire carve-out and to put an affordability overlay. If the state is going to cram this down on us with our safety at stake, we need to fight it with everything that we have. I have been fighting it. I'll continue to fight it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Eric, your thoughts?
So uh, I think that both Kristin and Barrett articulated why SB nine is a terrible bill. I mean, SB nine is not fine in my book. So I think that ultimately, though, we do need to fight back. Um, I I was on the legislative committee with uh, my colleagues here. And we brought forward, we never had a special legislative committee, but I'm proud to work with with them to bring it forward and have a hearing on SB nine at our legislative committee. We took a position in opposition. The other thing that we know what's going to happen is this is just the, this is just the first entry. There'll be future bills that take away more. It's not local control. It's that this is exactly what city councils are for, is to understand the needs of the community, each neighborhood by neighborhood, and to and to adjust with those and to work with the community to get where we need to go. So I think we need to oppose it now and I've already been reaching out to League of Cities representatives on if the League of Cities is going to challenge it and other municipalities, because there is strength in numbers. So if we um, coordinate with our other municipalities within the league and can become unified to oppose it, I think that is a strong message in and of itself.
Thank you. All right, Megan?
Uh, I'll join with uh, the others in saying unequivocally, I do not support SB nine. I mean, full stop. I don't support SB ten either, but it's an opt-in or opt-out. So at this point, I think our bigger issue um, and where we really need to focus our energy urgently is on SB nine. And I I have to say, I I understand that the state legislature is responding to an urgently felt housing crisis. But when you paint with such a broad brush, it really does a disservice to us in Santa Barbara. It takes away any capacity we have to maintain what is special, what is unique, uh, what we all love about our city so much. So I agree, I um, was proud to to vote uh, against it at the legislative committee and at council. I am also working closely with the League of Cities, um, following where the judicial process is taking us in terms of um, of opposing it. But you know, I'm really, really interested in the work that's being done to uh, put this on the ballot, to have a referendum in 2022. I mean, I I think um, that could really be for us, the way to speak with a loud, clear, effective voice to say, we want to be able to have say over what happens in our community. This is not right for us in Santa Barbara.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Zachary, I'm going to direct this one to you. How would you respond to those who do not want to see greater density and newer construction for housing?
Well, I'm one of those people. I agree. I don't want to see newer construction and I don't want bigger density. I I think we're we're packed. I don't think we should be, I don't think Santa Barbara downtown should be responsible for the increasing number of students enrolled at UCSB, the increasing amount of uh, tech industry people that are coming here. We have a lot of people coming in and out. We're a transient city, much like Honolulu, where there's a small core of people that live there and and a large group of people moving in and out of the city at any time. So I think we're pretty much packed and I agree with that. Um, the other side is I do see we have a need for more housing for the people that do live or that the workforce and the and the uh, the local community. So I'm torn between it, but I I I am one of those people, so I would treat them with sympathy and empathy and talk with them and try to find common ground on how we can like, meet at a halfway point, an agreeable point for our city.
All right, thank you. And Barrett, same question to you.
Yeah, so I I sympathize with them. I grew up surfing here. Uh, all that mattered was clean water and less people. Um, we didn't want the town to explode in population and honestly, I still sort of feel that way. I I I want to minimize hi higher density and new construction um, as much as possible while still balancing and addressing the important needs for affordable housing and downtown revitalization. It's a key component of it. So my priority isn't to jump to new construction and and higher densities without first prioritizing um, the reuse of our largest and smallest vacant or underutilized spaces. I I think our city leaderships let us down here and I'll ensure that gets done. And additionally, it's been said a lot, we need experienced leaders to drive our city to truly adopt these improvements to our permitting and review process. Um, the combination of adaptive reuse and an overhauled permitting system will go a long way to limit our need for new high-density development.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kristin, your thoughts?
Thank you. Um, we do have an affordable housing crisis, uh, and I I I want to acknowledge that. I I'm not at all in favor of building density just for density sake and I don't believe in trickle-down economics. So I I don't believe in more market-rate luxury housing. Anything that we build has to address our missing middle, our workforce needs, um, and also our first-time buying opportunities, that ability to invest and gain equity to be able to to uh, leverage that in other ways is good for our community. Uh, adaptive reuse of the vacuous, empty spaces, absolutely, and to streamline that. But also about a third of the homes on the Riviera are not primary residences. They're vacant and they sit vacant. Those are spaces that I believe um, we could consider if it's not your primary residence, charging a community benefit fee, that that could go back into the community to develop workforce housing. Uh, we need to really be looking at what we can do as a community to address the workforce affordability, missing middle.
Thank you. Eric, your thoughts?
So I I think one is we need to acknowledge that a lot of the issues that these individuals bring up are 100% correct. Because the first thing is we don't have enough water. Uh, our water supply is very strained. Our trash and uh, supply is very strained. Out at Tegus, there's a limited life capacity of the landfill. So what are we going to do when the landfill is full at some point in the near future of having to truck our trash and ratting more people? So I think one, they may, they raise valid points uh, from an infrastructure perspective, let alone the historical perspective that we have. So I think before we start building a lot of new construction, we do need to look at how we can fit it in within the neighborhoods such as ADUs. And then really look at the last remaining parcels where we can get some units, because we do need to have more units for our critical workforce, not just city workers, but we need more teachers. We need, we need more public safety. We need just the 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 critical infrastructure that makes our city work. Because when we do have natural disasters and they can't get here, we've seen the concept. So that's where I think we need to focus those efforts, how to adequately plan for the future of San Nuevo, the Cumbre Plaza, to meet that need and acknowledge that they have very valid points that we need to address.
Thank you. Thank you. Megan?
Uh, I I don't think density itself is the enemy. I think density done poorly is what is really the problem. Density that is not done Density that is not done thoughtfully, density that does not get us the type of housing that we need. That's, that's where I have a real issue with density. But look, we, you know, we do have a crisis on our hands. I was speaking to a housing provider just yesterday who said that our vacancy rate has fallen once again below 1%. There are too many people in the sixth district in particular that struggle to find housing. We cannot pay, we cannot afford the housing we have and there's nothing available for us. So I think there is something to be said for density that's done thoughtfully, that fits into the community, that's in a place where we all agree it's needed, which is where the jobs are. And I would also just point out from an environmental perspective, it's clear that denser housing is better for the environment. It is better for us in the long term in our efforts to fight climate change, to have people living closer to where they work. That means denser housing and where the jobs, in places where the jobs are, which is our downtown. So you know, I, I think it's important that we have these conversations, that we really try to tease out what we're feeling when we have discomfort with the idea of density downtown. But, but no, just in concept, I, I don't think it's something to be afraid of. I think what we need to do is lean in and make sure that we do it well. And what we get out of density is what we actually need to serve real residents in our community.
Okay. And Nina?
Started with me.
Oh, did I? Did you answer this one on greater density? I apologize. Okay. I thought I started with, with Zachary on that. My apologies. All right, moving to our last question then. Barrett, I'm gonna start with you on this one. Serving on the council is a very time-consuming role. How would you handle the workload and balance your other responsibilities?
Yes. So serving on the Planning Commission, Brian's given me a helpful perspective. It's a time-consuming job and I have the time and capacity to do it without compromise or cutting corners. I've been able to prove that to myself. So I'm, and I'm also at a point in my work where our business is not dependent on me for the day-to-day, which is incredible. And I've worked hard to get to that point so I could serve in other ways. It's what allowed me to be an active volunteer on boards and commissions. So additionally, you know, I'm, I'm a professional. I'm highly organized. I'm resourceful. I'm diligent. I'm always prepared, well in advance, and I have the ability to navigate complicated issues. So I'm someone who does the work and doesn't make excuses and I'll handle this job, the workload, with effectiveness and efficiency.
Okay. Thank you. Kristin?
Yeah, this question made me laugh genuinely out loud. Let me tell you about my day. I dropped off my daughter at junior high, observing the traffic patterns along the way, driving through District Four to get there. I came to City College. I taught two geology classes in a lab where I interfaced with 20-something-year-olds faced with housing crises. And the topics that I teach are water scarcity, debris flow, earthquake, you name it. Things that affect the city are my daily conversations and research that I'm on top of and on the Water Commission as liaison and Kachuma Board. Oh, I had a Kachuma Conservation Release Board meeting this morning as well, which also informs what I teach and what I do. And then I'll go home tonight and I'll, I'll be with my family and we'll do it all again tomorrow. So my life has always been, I fill it to capacity with community work. When I was in graduate school, I had two babies and worked at the USGS doing research in groundwater contamination. It's completely doable and so integrated with how these topics inform each other. And it's a real privilege actually to be able to have that synergy and, and share it outward.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric, your thoughts?
So my, my day is very similar to Kristin's. I'll be trying to arrange 55 parent or 55 students to get parent drivers for a community event of that high schools organizing. And I have no idea how to do this all through emails and figuring it all out. That's what I'm going to do right when I get off this call. So, but I think there's something that's, that's lost is Santa Barbara is an amazing town, but it's also be a harsh town. And if you want to make it here, you got to work your ass off to make it here. There's no ifs, ands or buts about it. And I have kissed, I've had a second job at Trader Joe's, as everybody knows. And there's many days where I work the 4:00 AM or the 5:00 AM or we'll have a late council meeting and I'm up at four in the morning, the next morning to go to work. And you make it work because you love the community and willing to put in the sacrifice. So none of us would be here if we didn't want to put the time and the sacrifice to serve the community that we all love. And I've done it over the last four years and I'll end by saying that I think I've managed pretty well because I was honored that the independent called me a beast when it comes to constituent service.
Thank you. Megan?
I'll second Eric wholeheartedly. It's, it's certainly true that serving on the city council is a great responsibility. Over the last two and a half years, I think I've proven my commitment to it. You know, I'm, I'm no stranger to hard work like most, many residents in the sixth district. My husband and I are working parents. I'm a renter. I understand the challenge of finding and affording childcare, putting it all together. I know the stress of, of making it all work. And I also know how absolutely vital it is to have our voice, the voice of working families on the city council. With our voice represented, we have made meaningful changes in service, not of the bureaucracy, not just of the insiders, but, but change for our families. For example, we passed in the last two years, the most protective tenants rights ordinance in Santa Barbara's history. So families don't have to lay awake at night wondering what they're going to do if they are subject to a no-fault eviction. So I, I'm just going to circle back to where I began, you know, being on the city council is a big commitment. I'm devoted to the city for the same reason that our downtown local working families are, because, because we love it and we're committed to building a city for our families, for all families where, where we can thrive.
Thank you. Nina?
Joining passion is being part of the community, morning, noon and night. And I feel the council member role fits me quite well. I love talking to people and helping them figure out how they can be effective, helping them understand an issue, hearing their concerns. And beyond taking care of my own personal needs and making creative time for myself, I have time to take on more responsibility and I want to help see our future through and all of our different projects, make sure that we're being collaborative and really on a lot of the challenges in our community. So I will spend time and attention on this. In addition, a role, I'm looking forward to taking on flexible work projects as they fit my schedule.
All right. Thank you. And Zachary?
Well, my grandfather worked in, in his town. My grandfather was on the Chamber of Commerce. He was on the city council in Ramona. And my father worked for Santa Barbara City in the nineties and early 2000s. So I've seen firsthand how much, how much time and effort civil service takes. And I have the utmost respect for anyone that enters into that arena, everyone here. I myself have been a part of the cultural fabric of Santa Barbara for a long time. I've, I've contributed a lot to the artistic community in this town. And it's a real social, playing music and being, living downtown for so long, it's been a real social, social thing for me. So the social part comes naturally. I'm excited to get involved in the political aspect and get involved in decision-making and representation. I'm really excited to be represented for all the people I know and all the people that I've met and all the people that I like that live here. What's important to me is taking the time out to be accessible. Accessibility is, is one of the bigger things I want to focus on. I like to have an office with office hours that are set and open to the public. So anyone at any time can feel like they could meet firsthand. That's important. Yeah. And I've discussed with my boss, taking, at my job that I currently work at, which takes me to all kinds of beautiful locations around town. I drill for soil samples for a geotechnical company. And I could probably use a couple of those classes Professor Sneddon teaches to help me out. But yeah, there's plenty of time for this job.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for running the, the gauntlet tonight. We appreciate it very much. We'll end with, you know, two minutes for each of you to, to make your final appeals, appeals. Kristin, I would love to start with you.
Thank you. I will just say that I am a, a real member of this community and have been for decades. I approach this work on city council as truly working for the people, as one of the people. I've, I've served as the Chair of the Peabody Charter School Board and Chair of Star King Parent Child Workshop. And for decades have been a volunteer community member. I am, my, my area of expertise is in many of the issues that affect Santa Barbara in water security, fire safety and our long-term planning. And that's why I enjoy the endorsement of the firefighters, the independent, the Sierra Club, Montecito Journal, former Senator Hannah B. Jackson, former Mayor Hailene Schneider and Sheila Lodge. And they know that I am a community member and I'm here to fight for you, for you, the voters, for you, the members of the entire city of Santa Barbara, not just District Four, to protect and preserve what we have in our environment, in our sustainability and our resilience into the future. I would be honored to have your vote.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
Well, first I just want to thank you for hosting or coordinating tonight. Brian, you did a great job keeping us on track. Appreciate you setting a timer there halfway through. So it really helped. And just the AIA for hosting this and, and all the work that the AIA did in the design charrette. I specifically want to call out Cass Enberg because she spent a lot of time with me, walking me down to each of the design shrettes down there. And I also want to thank all of my fellow colleagues tonight for participating tonight. I learned a lot about each of you, every one of you, and also just ideas that we could bring back to the city. And I felt tonight's discussion was really constructive. And I also do want to thank my opponent for not going negative on me. That's been very helpful. And at the end, I, I really just want to say, the last question, it really gets to the heart of it. We have for the first time last few years, a working council. And I think my job, I know Kristin's job, Megan's job, Barrett's, Zach's, Nina's, it keeps us closer to the community. So having that second job is a way to really interact. And believe me, working at a grocery store, you don't get any closer to that. And it makes me a better council member. So I just appreciate the opportunity to serve another term and thank you for tonight.
Thank you. All right. Megan, how about you?
Thank you. And, and I'll echo the thanks. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, AIA and all the cosponsors. It's great to, to be able to come together again this evening. I want to start just by saying directly to the residents of District Six that it is an incredible honor to represent you on the Santa Barbara City Council. And I'm so proud of the work that we have done together to enact transformative change for working families in our city. We created the State Street Promenade, which is an idea that had been discussed and debated and workshopped for 20, 30 years. We made it a reality and, and there's a lot left to do to build a community vision that will put us into the next, the next generation. But I'm incredibly proud of the work that we've done. I'm also really excited about the work that we've done in the housing space to reform the AUD policies, to require more inclusionary housing. So the housing that gets, gets built actually works to serve you, our working families. We put money directly into your pocket during COVID when we used some of the funds that came from the federal government to rent relief. That's money that went right to you and serves our local working families. I've been a strong voice in favor of eviction protections and tenants rights. And I'm really proud of the work that we have done to stand up for working folks in our community and to prioritize our needs and make sure that we have a voice at the table. I've championed along with my colleagues, policies to really increase citizen participation, the Community Formation Commission, the State Street Master Planning Committee. This is opportunity for real citizens, not insiders, not the bureaucracy, to come to the table and share what they want to see for their city. That's a really important thing. I will close just by saying this. I say it every time, but I think it's really important. We are coming out of this COVID crisis more resilient. We are building a city that's stronger. We're building a city that's more just, that's more equitable, that's more livable for all of us. That's something to be, be so proud of. We still have a lot of work to do and I respectfully ask for your vote and very much appreciate your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. Nina, final thoughts from you?
Thank you so much to AIA, Downtown Santa Barbara, National Housing Coalition, for all of the community partners putting together this forum and bringing everyone together. Our community is at a critical turning. The pandemic has given us an opportunity to be innovative and to transform our community and really address some of our challenges in a new and different way. Fortunately for us, we have the design talent in spades and we need to embrace our design legacy going forward. Santa Barbara is known for its architecture and we should be similarly known for how we're going to be creative in transforming all of our vacant buildings into living spaces and other creative uses. But why I'm running for council is we really need a proactive approach and more leadership to get out of the way of our local businesses so they can get established and operate. We have a lot of rules that are no longer serving us and they haven't been for quite some time. We need that leadership and action to actually take, take, take those off the books, revise them. It's time that we take those actions. So this is why I'm running for council, because we need thoughtful changes and more leadership to really create and reimagine our future. I was very proud to work alongside 160 architects imagining our downtown in last year's design charrette, working several weekends to create a window display, to educate the community on how important housing and the creative use of our public spaces is. We need to see more community-driven projects like this where people feel engaged, heard and really proud of what they come up with. I understand where we've been over the last 25 years. I understand the present challenges of this moment and I have a future vision for our future. I want to roll up sleeves and get to work, collaborate with our entire community and especially our design community that really has a key role in working on a lot of our downtown revitalization efforts. Thank you for your time and I'm really honored to be here. I look forward to working with you and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Zachary, final thoughts?
I originally, excuse me. Thanks to the AIA for having this debate. This has been great. And I apologize again for showing up late. It's beyond my control. Nice to see everyone. I originally started running for the city because I felt there was no place for me to go to talk to you. I felt like in this town, my knees weren't being met. I felt like I was being spoken to and not spoken with. So that was originally drove me to enter this race. Santa Barbara is at a pivotal time right now because of the pandemic and after. One thing I'm not hearing anyone talk about is that this next term is a five-year term. So it's a long time to have influence over any policy. So it's very important this election to have someone that the voters vote someone in who represents their wants, their needs, someone they can communicate with. I hear a lot of people in this race talking about a leadership role, but what I don't hear is people talking about transparency or accountability, which are the traits of a leadership role. Someone who can relate to people, someone who can manage and control policy and get it where it needs to go. Santa Barbara makes a lot of money. We have tools at our disposal. I don't think that money should be put into things that aren't really going to matter in the long run, like a new coat of paint, a new facade. We've seen that. Santa Barbara is a town that changes every five years. We need to invest the money in the community. We need to be a job creator. We need to put people to work. If we have problems, we need to find solutions for them. And those solutions can also be solutions to other problems. Solutions are opportunities, you know, situations where we can make work out. These are all the things I see. I'm running for city council District Six and I'd appreciate your vote. I'm accessible. I'm downtown. Come find me. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And Barrett, we'll wrap up with you.
Great. Well, Brian, not surprisingly, job well done tonight. Thank you. So Santa Barbara is my, my hometown since high school. Really, my, my life's been focused on working to make things better. From my work restoring historic buildings downtown to a decade of volunteer service that I'm proud of at our county jail, serving the chronically homeless and working to restore lives of people who have lost everything. Over the past four years, the greatest impediment to the protection and revitalization of our city is the city council itself. It's why I'm running for city council in District Four. It's, it's time to truly restore our Santa Barbara. We need to bring a clear vision and strong action to turn this special city around. I'm running so we can secure a brighter future for our downtown and for our neighborhoods. And I'm dedicated to bringing businesses and residents back to the heart of our city. That has to happen. And we need to make our downtown clean and safe like it used to be. I'll provide incentives, not disincentives for that revitalization. And I'll take action on our homelessness crisis with empathy and with strength, with sustainable solutions for temporary housing with service. With sustainable solutions for temporary housing with services outside high-impact areas. So in general, I am dedicated to maintaining and enhancing the quality of life that's so characteristic of our historic District Four neighborhoods. I'll aggressively protect our single-family neighborhoods from these state demands for higher-density development, from increasing crime and the threats of fire. Lastly, walking door-to-door every day for these past four months or so has been an absolute life changer. An experience I would otherwise never have. So thank you for the support and I ask for your vote.
All right. Thank you to everyone tonight for participating, for carving time out of your day. I know you're all very busy, but we appreciate it. And I know the voters do as well. So on behalf of AIA SB, all of our partners and sponsors, we really appreciate it. Thank you again. And I just want to say a special thank you to all of you for your willingness to serve. That's one of the biggest parts of it. And not everyone, everyone's got, you know, answers, but not everyone will actually put their money where their mouth is. So for each of you to, to put yourselves out there to, to serve and, and to be accessible, it's very appreciated. Just a quick note for those of you that are watching, that watched our Monday event or, or didn't watch it, didn't catch it. It is up on the website at aiasb.com under the Members in the News section. As well as this event tonight will be up there in just a couple of days as well. So again, thank you all very much and we wish you the best and look forward to seeing what happens in November. All right. Take care, everyone. Have a good night.